Thank you very much. I'm Dwayne McOscar. And first, I'd like to thank the NAACP, Stafford County NAACP for having and hosting this. This is the greatest event every year. I am a member of Stafford County NAACP and I'm also a frequent briefer. And I know it takes a lot of work to set these things up, so thank you very much. I'd first like to start off with, you know, these jobs are hard. Whoever gets elected is gonna work hard. My wife has been supporting me in the schools for about last 10 years. I've got four children, third grade, fourth grade, got a five-year Iraq break, and then I have an 11th grader and 11th grader at Stafford High School. And, you know, we really believe in public education, and that's why we've been working so hard for the schools. But let's get to the point of it, okay? What have I done in the last four years? Let's talk about results, okay? Leadership and results. First thing on the board, I was a month on the board, they told me that Stafford High School wasn't gonna have an automotive shop for the kids on CTE. They said, "We didn't have the money, we didn't have the room." I fought for it hard, I gained the support of the community in the board, now we have a beautiful Stafford High School automotive shop for our kids with CTE. The next thing that came up was cell phones. Cell phones in school. They told me it was gonna be BYOT. That's fancy word for bring your own technology. Well, guess what? The kids at Stafford High School, they just wanted to text. They didn't want to do it. They're not doing calculus problems on those cell phones. It was miserable for the teachers, it was miserable for the parents, and oh, by the way, even some high school kids didn't like it. I didn't vote for it three years ago, and I didn't vote for it three months ago. I've got a strong record on that. Cell phones in school are bad, and they're still bad. Girls lacrosse, okay? The community came to the Title IX issue. That means an inequality in sports, right? Girls lacrosse came to me. The Stafford High School staff told me, "Nope, you're not gonna have that. It's too much money, there'll be no interest." Well, guess what? After one week of talking with the parents, I got girls lacrosse. Back into the program is over 200 girls in it right now. And now I have to stop. So, thank you.
Ms. Metoar?
Hello, everyone. My name is Carol Heedler Metoar, and first, I want to say thank you, because I'm sure we all have very busy schedules, and you have taken time out of your very busy day to be here doing this, and that really shows your dedication to not just our school system, but also our community. So, thank you. I also want to thank the NAACP for hosting. They have put a lot of work into this. There's been many nights of it, and they have done a fabulous job. So, thank you for having it. We're very lucky that voters have the ability to get more information. I hope in the brief time that I have, that I can give you a little bit of information about me. I started my teaching career here in Stafford in 1996. Since that time, I've taught special education, I've taught regular education, I've taught inclusion, I've taught honors. So, I have a very broad spectrum of experience. I've gained my master's degree from George Mason University in instructional technology, and I've been working on my PhD in instructional leadership. So, I'm the only candidate, the running for the George Washington District, that has devoted their entire career strictly to education. My business is teaching and learning. It's what I believe in, it's what I do. It doesn't feel like a job, it's a passion. So, what I would like to bring to this board is that perspective of an educator who's been in the classroom and who has carried out policies that have been made time and time again, and before the policies are written, to be able to say, "Is this gonna work?" Based on my experience, because I have spent 20 years in Stafford County, and I am very well-versed with how things run in the building, and I know people from all over, from the north end and to the south end of the county, I think that lends a unique perspective for me. I have three children in Stafford County Public Schools. My husband also is a public servant, and he's a police officer. And so, we're both very committed in our house of servant heart, and I kind of see that as the school board's job. I see it as its responsibility is to set the tone at the top for success for what goes on in our work sites. And I think with that, I'm gonna have to stop. Thanks.
Ms. Oliver?
Hello, I'm Donna Oliver, and I too want to thank the Stafford County NAACP for hosting this event. It's something that keeps me on my toes, making sure I understand the issues. I've been in Stafford County, particularly the George Washington District, for over 30 years. I moved here when I came out of college, went to work on the Tomahawk Weapons Control System, thought I'd be here a year or two, and I'm still in the district. So, in preparation for understanding what does a school board member does, and what does a school board do, I met with the superintendent, and it was great. He referred to this Baldrige Performance for Excellent framework. So, when I did a little work on it, I found out that it has these five steps. The first is ad hoc, the way we run our school systems. Everyone's doing their own thing, their own way. Then you go up to level five, and then you're an optimized organization, and you're always improving what you do. And when I worked on Tomahawk, this is what we did. Software development. We started out at level zero, level one, ad hoc, everyone's doing their own thing, their own way. Even though we're all doing the same thing, we all do it differently, all the different pieces and parts. And then it goes up to level five, where an optimized organization always processes improvement. I said, "In there," so I look at this school board and the school board membership as working in an organization that you always want to improve. They all have, just like my weapons control system, the school board. You have long-term plans. How are you gonna get there? Then, we have to do the daily operations. How do we know what we're doing? Or how do we know if we're doing what we're supposed to be doing? You have to have some monitoring. You know, you have to know what to look at, so we know we're on that path. So, when those kids go from kindergarten up to 12th grade, that we've had a plan, and we stay on the path to give them a good education. Thank you.
Thank you. The first question came from our audience here tonight. It has to do with class size. So, the question is, "Are the classes too crowded? What is the right size for classes?" And that may vary by grade level. "How do you know that's the right size?" If our classes are too crowded, where will you find the resources to reduce that crowding? From other parts of the school budget, from other parts of the county budget, or from a tax increase? So, crowded classrooms, yes, no? How do you fix it if it's broken? And the first answer tonight comes from Ms. Metoar.
Well, class size is something that I know a lot about, since I stand in front of a roomful of students every single day. And so, class size, research says that the optimum class size is 18. It's probably not realistic to think that we're gonna get every class to that level. But class sizes have been pretty well, just over that in areas of special needs and when we have students who are struggling. I've been fortunate to have class sizes of 18 to 20 students for my most needy kids, and I've also had class sizes of 36 and 37. So, I've done both sides. What that really means, class size is a big buzzword, but what it really means for students and student achievement, and that's what we're really concerned about here, what it really means is that students do not get the feedback that they need to grow. The biggest thing that you can do to improve student achievement is be able to make connections with kids, and make connections with what they're learning, and being able to talk to them about where they are, and where they need to go, and set goals, and those kinds of things. And when you have 150 kids on your caseload, I've done that, versus having 120 or 110, it makes a huge difference. I've worked in that capacity. In order to fund it, I think basically you set the priority. I think some of those conversations are already being had. I think we need to continue that work. And if you make something a priority, and you commit to doing it, and you provide the support for our educators, then that's how it's gonna get done. And I'm probably, yeah, okay. That's not a lot of time.
Class sizes. Class size is a big deal. Because of our budget mishap, and everyone knows about the 8.3, there's probably a question in there about that, we had to release 55 teaching positions last year. We'll talk about, more about that later. That increased class sizes. Class size should be about 20 folks. Should be about 20 kids in the class, okay? And that goes from studies, there's an SOL, there's SOL benchmarks that I think are way too high. But the biggest thing for the school board member is to make sure that we get the money to buy the teachers back. Like, I just moved to, with the support of the board, I just moved for 35 more teachers. As soon as I found out about the missing money, I put 35 more instructors back in the class sizes. We have some of the best class sizes at Ferry Farm Grafton, and Stafford High School has the best class sizes out of all the high schools in the county. Dixon Smith, we need to do some work there. But this is the deal. You've got to gain the money and the financial support from the school board, and from the Board of Supervisors in order to buy teachers. That's what we get paid to do. Thank you.
Ms. Oliver?
Yep, we've all been reading about the class sizes in the newspaper lately. And I don't think the school board member in itself, or a school board, says, "We must have smaller classrooms." That's part of the strategic plan, part of the operational plans. How big should our classes be? You know, we've seen the studies, the younger grades, eighth through two, they need smaller classrooms, get a good base for moving up into the grades. I feel like it's up to the principals and the superintendent to define what are the requirements for the class sizes, and that the school board needs to support them. And if priorities need to be made, you gotta cut something. Is it teachers? Is it something else? I feel like the teachers, and the principals, and the superintendent have discussed what the priorities are, and then the school board is to support that. And that's where I would come in.
Thank you. The next question deals with testing and instructional time. Testing, the testing part first, is there too much testing, too little testing? Are we teaching the test and missing more important educational goals? What's your position on that issue? And as well as instructional time, what is your position for making sure teachers have adequate time to help students learn materials and reach their potential? So, testing and instruction. And first on this is Ms. Oliver.
We all know why we have the test. You know, some people at the lower end of the socioeconomic scale, they feel like they're being left behind. We need a test to accommodate them, or to help them move along. But I think what's happened is, we all know, we went from one end of the pendulum, and now the test went to the other. But now, I think people are realizing those SOLs are doing what they're supposed to do, and so now they're swinging back. I said, "Those are state mandates. Any of us have problems with those SOLs, we need to be contacting our state reps and say, 'Help us out here, it's not working.'" And I'm from the old-fashioned day, you know, SATs. I think they're good. But colleges today, they're starting to do away with those. I said, "If we're not gonna use the test, we need some other measure to say our kids are learning," because that's why the SOLs were put in there. Might not have been the best implementation, but we need to get the metrics. And this is part of the plan. How do we know the schools are doing what we want them to do? You have to get those metrics and look at them year to year. Are we still on path, so our kids get that good education from kindergarten back up to coming out of 12th grade?
And Ms. Metoar, your next question.
Okay. Testing has always been a part of teaching, and it will always be a part of teaching, but it has gotten out of control. Currently, we spend over a third of our school year on tests. And some of those tests aren't necessarily within the control of a local school board, but some of them are. As an educator who's been in the classroom in this county, I can tell you that there are district mandated tests that we could take away, and we could do it immediately. We could give back time to teaching and learning right away. Absolutely. At the state level, I have also been very involved with the Legislative Committee, working on advocating more or less tests from the state level. I'm also engaged at the federal level, and what's been going on. And right now, it seems to be that the trend is that people are starting to listen. It's taken a long time, but we're starting to listen to educators about what works for kids. We are never gonna close an achievement gap by giving a kid a test. And teachers need real-time data. Most of these tests don't come back until the following year after those students have gone for us, and they do no good for us, because those kids are gone. We need real-time data inside the classroom that we can use to help improve what's going on with kids right then and there. As an educator, I feel like I have the best lens to look through when it comes to testing and dealing with how to fix that. I have some real ideas about the fact that our computer labs closed down for a good portion of the year, simply for tests. So, if kids don't have access to the computer labs or the technology, we're being able to do those things, because we have to shut them out for testing. We need to fix that.
Ms. McOscar?
Thank you. Is there too many tests? Yes, there's too many tests. I've heard it from the teachers, I hear it from my kids, I hear it from my wife, I see it in the schools. The teachers are spending a crazy amount of time on tests. Forty-five states in the Union have a common core, and we have SOLs. SOLs generate tests, and they ask for data, data, and more data. We've gotta get to it. I agree, there are some state mandated tests that we have to get rid of, but the school board and the curriculum folks can identify that. But that's what it goes back to when the school board. The school board has to hire the right person for the job in the curriculum department. There's folks getting paid $130,000 a year to write curriculum for us, that I don't think are doing our job. And that's what guys like me, and a few other board members, have been trying to get rid of, and get new people in the position, okay? We can't go down and reach with a calculator and figure out what the teachers are doing. That's not our job. Our job is policy, and our job is figuring out what's going on, being briefed by the staff, and then making an executive-level decision. We don't need more folks that have too much feelings towards this way and too much feelings towards that way. You really do need an executive guy or gal sitting in the seat of the school board. That's what you need. And that's what I've been pushing. I haven't missed a beat yet in four years in doing it, and I've got plenty of other results to talk about in my closing comments. That's it.
Thank you. The next question came from the audience, and the question is, "How do you think the school board handled the transgender issue? Would you have handled it differently? How should we handle it going forward in Stafford County?" And in this question, Ms. Metoar is first. I think we were middle last time.
Okay, so here's my thought on this. I actually have been contacted by the parent of that student, and I did some research, because I wanted to know what the real story was. And the bottom line is that as an educator, I believe that our job is to protect the rights of every single student that comes through our doors every single day. And if there is an issue that is going on that is impeding the teaching and learning environment, then we have a responsibility to deal with it. I wish that that situation had been handled with a parent, and a teacher, and an administrator in the school, and never made its way to the school board. But it did. And when it made its way to the school board, it was handled poorly. Plain and simple. I don't believe in discriminating against anyone based on, for any reason, whether it's their sexual orientation, the color of their skin, their ethnicity, their zip code, or the amount of money that their parents make. And that we have to do some real work with our institutional discrimination that we have, and we have to make sure that every single kid shows up feeling protected and safe and ready to learn at school. And that's kind of how I feel about this situation. Quite frankly, I feel like a lot of adults put a lot of really big ideas on small children's restroom needs in that case. And the bottom line is, the kids probably handled that case a whole lot better than the adults did. And I'm gonna run out of time, I just, that's how I feel about that.
Ms. Oliver?
So, how did the school board handle that? I brought them privy to all the info. I saw that minds were changed, and so, this is a new topic for many of us. How do we handle it? I feel the data needs to be looked at first. You know, I've not quite, I don't quite understand why the minds were changed. But like Carol said, we have to provide an environment for all our kids, so that they're not afraid of learning. You know, we've done it, English is a second language. You know, we try to get those kids up to speed, so that they can talk to the others. Same with the transgender. You know, the issues that they may be experiencing, we have to make a good climate for them. And so, the school board, their role should be, are we providing a good climate for all the students in our school? And that is how the decision should be made.
Ms. McOscar?
So, I guess I'm the only one that has to say that I made the right decision, right? So, anyway, here you go. It came to us, this issue, and it wasn't new to us. There's not state policy. Remember, we go back to the school board members, our policy. We have to look at policy. There's no state, there was no federal policy in this issue. The young child in question was being offered a, was a bathroom issue, was being offered a unisex bathroom at the time. Their needs were being met, but they wanted to use the other biological sexes bathroom. The parents of that individual were, are the parents in the classroom, there was a big divide, you know? I feel for the student, the student wants to do it, we should do it, and then the other half said, "No, no, no." Since there was no policy, the school board decided not to get in front of state and federal policy on this issue. We have to wait to be, to get the state and federal policy to make a, to make a decision on this issue. And that's what we did. I haven't heard anything from the student or the parents since we made our decision, and that's it.
Question has to do with equal opportunity in the schools. In the mind of this questioner, there seems to be disproportionate discipline needed out to minority students. Do you believe that to be the case? If it is the case, how do you stop it? If it's not the case, how do you prevent it from emerging? And the second half of this question is, "How do we make our staff and our teachers more representative of the communities they serve? Do you feel that is adequate as it is? If not, how do you achieve a more representative cadre of staff and teachers to match the community's diversity?" The first answer on this question is Mr. McOscar.
Okay. Good question. Okay, so, as I mentioned earlier, I am a member of the NAACP, and that question was brought to me at one of the forums. I said, "Great question. What we have to do is, you have to match the society with the folks, especially with the policing, anyway. You can't have all white police with an all-black community. Doesn't work." So, what I did is, I went back to the staff, and I asked for a diversity laydown of our teachers-to-student ratio, and how many, and does it match the community ratio? Because that's the kind of, that's the kind of balance, and that's what you need. You need to make sure that you're representative of the community that you're, that you're serving. And we did find that it was a little, it was a little skewed, and it was a little bit less. I don't know, I don't know anything about the data on the punishment. We do sit on discipline control boards as school board members, and so, we see a variety of folks coming in, at least at the school board level. And it doesn't seem to me that there was that disparity at the school board level for the stuff that came up to us. But I personally don't know about each, every one of the 30 schools, what happened. So, but that's, that's what you need to do. You need to make sure that you're representative of the community, and I'm the one who asked for the data, I'm the one who got the data, and I'm gonna, I still owe Ashton Hayes the data, but I do have that data. And what we have to do is, we have to make sure that with our hiring, just like any other federal agency or state agency, we gotta make sure that the hiring practices, we take that into consideration.
Thank you. Ms. Metoar, your next question.
Okay, so I believe that education is the biggest civil rights issue of our time. It's where opportunity occurs for students, and we need to make sure that that opportunity is equal for everyone. Certainly, we have students that come to school every single day with everything they need at home, and all the resources, but those aren't the students that keep me up at night. We also have students who struggle, who come from low-income families who are due to country and have language issues. We have all kinds of diverse needs in our school buildings. And so, we need to make sure that we are looking into data. And that's one place where data really can help us, and we can assess and say, "Are we doing a good job with all of those different needs and those different groups?" I have some other ideas about, because there's not a lot of time, about how to make sure that the, our teaching population matches our community. I think we need to do a better job of looking for students in high school who would like to be represented in the teaching field, and giving them opportunities to try it out, and to do things, and help our educators. It works both, you know, and helps on both sides. We can do more with offering scholarships and incentives, and also because if they go away to a teacher prep program, they're likely to come home to Stafford and offering them a place of employment, and giving them incentives to do that. I think we need to reach out to our teacher prep programs at Mary Washington University, and George Washington, or George Mason, and even VCU, and match our teacher prep programs with opportunities in Stafford to get students while they're still in college in our schools in Stafford. That also gives them experience, and it gives us help, and it helps us start to attract and retain those teachers.
Ms. Oliver?
I think I heard the question, "Do we support the community? Do our teachers represent the people in their community?" And I kind of see a little affirmative action in that question, and a little diversity. And I've been in the federal government a long time, and we have a lot of this going on. And in my work, we never look at what these people look like. It's like, "Are you doing the job?" I said, you know, and so, in schools, I would do the same thing. Do we have good teachers who are dynamic, can engage the students? And that would be my first criteria. Now, certainly, if there are some requirements in certain classrooms, where, you know, say a Spanish teacher, you know, and you've got these Spanish, you know, Hispanic-type kids in a classroom, maybe that is a great thing. That might be a requirement of the class. And if it is, we need to get that representation for those particular classrooms. But if kids feel comfortable with the particular type of person teaching their class, then that should be a requirement. But also, I think the engagement is important. Getting the kids engaged and interested in learning is the important thing.
This is the last question. You knew it was coming. I'm gonna wrap in the 8.3 million FOUND money, and you may bring that into this question. But the baseline question is, "Do we pay our teachers enough?" How much is enough? How do you know when you hit the right pay levels? And if it's not enough, where are you gonna find the money to pay our teachers more? To answer this question, first is Ms. Metoar.
Okay, so the FOUND, 8.3 million dollars. I want to tell you first off, I sat in the school board chambers when that decisions were being made, and we were cutting 55 teachers. And then the following year, when they were talking about how many teachers had left, almost 300. The previous year, it was 250. The previous year, it was about 200. Those aren't exact numbers, but every year, it's going up. Our teachers are leaving in droves. Droves. I've trained more than I can count across the hall from me on a day-to-day basis. And they've come here, and they've left to go somewhere else because of compensation and benefits. We have to address it. It has to be done, but that's only part of the equation. Compensation and benefits is just one thing. We have to support our staff and make it, "This is the place where you want to come and teach." And I will tell you that when I started in 1996, this was the place to come and teach. Stafford had a stellar reputation. People wanted to come here because of the schools. Teachers wanted to come here to teach, and we were the place to be. I believe we can be that place to be again, but not if we continue down the same path and with the same leadership that we have now. I believe we need new leadership with a new vision in order to get that done. And that means that we need to support educators. Compensation and benefits, but then we also need to, our new teachers. I taught peer professional development last year in Stafford County, and I can tell you, they were crying out for help. They were at their breaking point, and they needed real solutions. If we hadn't done away with the BRIDGE program, we'd have retired educators that could come in and support those new teachers. Our administrators are overburdened, they can't do it. We need outside people. We need to fund positions that are strictly there to support the work that teachers are doing in teaching and learning. If we improve the climate, they will stay, they will grow here, and then we will have a better school system.
Ms. Oliver?
So, the 8.3 million FOUND money, I think was a problem, was because of a problem that exists in our school board that has slowly been developing. This teachers leaving, experienced teachers, experienced teachers leaving, and new ones coming onboard creates a price, creates a pay gap. Just like the classroom size, it's first day of school, all of a sudden, we have a whole bunch of kids in the class we didn't expect. These are the kind of activities that occur year after year, and I feel like we need to manage those, so it's not a fire being put out at every budget discussion in every year. So, all those activities, like with the teachers leaving and new ones coming online, we know what happens year after year. We need to get that into a process. So, it's just one of those things that is continually monitored, so you know, you're not gonna have FOUND money, or even sometimes it could be missing. You know, same with the class sizes. Yes, teachers, I do think, need to be paid what they're being paid in a comparable area. I said, "I know that Dr. Benson is working on getting that chart. How much are the new teachers getting? And how much do the experienced teachers get compared to the surrounding communities?" And he's working on that. So, here again, it's looking at the data, looking at the data, and making sure that we can be competitive with the surrounding areas. I said, "And then if money needs to be found to pay the teachers, then we're gonna have to prioritize teachers and principals with the superintendent. What do we call it?"
Ms. McOscar?
Thank you. Part of my results, when I first got on the board, was budget transparency and momentum, momentum, as I kept going and going and going. People know that, I've been watching the board meetings, like the SCA, who have endorsed me for the second time in a row, know that I ask questions, and I keep asking and asking. I formed the Budget Committee. I formed the Standing Budget Committee that went toe-to-toe with the Board of Supervisors, and we figured out our differences, and we slowly started tightening that noose. I think, in my opinion, we were purposely, that money was purposely hidden from the school board, and that's my, that's my opinion, because we haven't had a forensic audit, but I'm the one who called for the forensic audit, with the support of these two board members in the back, okay? I'm the one who called for the guy's job that's in charge of the 8.3 money, because we had to let go of 55 teachers, and we had to make sure that, "Oh, by the way, I can't give you a raise," and that was teacher money from salary levels. Ridiculous. The guy's still working. So, what does that mean? There's seven board members, right? I didn't get the vote. I didn't get the vote. Absolutely ridiculous. The forensic audit will be in here, and we're going to go through these records, and we're going to find out what happened, and if there's bad folks in our system, we're going to get rid of them. I'm tired of the teachers not getting paid enough money, I've been fighting hard for them ever since, ever since we got in. Guess what? My wife and I are in the schools every day, every day for the last ten-plus years. We see folks that paraprofessionals need to borrow fifty bucks from somebody just to get something to eat. That's ridiculous. And I don't like this, and I'm ticked off about this eight point three. And if I'm back on the board, look at it.
So, now, there's two-minute closing statements from each of the three candidates. Mr. McCusker is first.
So, we went for the budget transparency. I told you, we started tightening the noose on the results. The second thing we did is, we finally got rid of a couple of folks that weren't doing our school system well. Our superintendent ended up leaving, and they had a couple of folks under them that went with them. Toxic leadership is what I had in the school system. It was terrible. We, as a board, didn't take the VSB, the Virginia School Boards Association, list of folks that couldn't get a job in Virginia that year. We went and hired a headhunting firm and got the best guy we could from Charlottesville, Albemarle School System, and he's doing a wonderful job. I think one of the biggest things is building trust with our funding body. The way to build trust is to keep briefing them, keep talking to them, keep asking them questions. Have them ask, say, "Hey, this is, I need you to understand, Mr. Cavalier, I need you to understand." And they do. Once you brief them, they do understand. They do start working with us. I got, personally, we got one point seven million dollars, and the bus drivers needed new buses, and I asked, I called up the supervisors, and because of the relationship that I built, I've got a million dollars in buses with the school board support. A million dollars extra in buses this year, just because of the relationships that we built. You know, in closing, not a whole leader's accountable. We've got to reduce class sizes. The school board, there's nothing more that they would love for me to get down here and sixth-grade math and talk about that all day during our twenty-four meetings a year. That's not our job. Our job is to make sure that we're hiring good guys and gals with diversity at the hundred and thirty thousand dollar a year job, because that's what they get, okay? Hold them accountable, and if they're not doing their job, you get rid of them. I tell you, the poison starts at the top sometimes, and if you get a poisonous top, it trickles down. It trickles down big time, okay? My wife and I, I don't want to be your senator, I don't want to be your Board of Supervisor member. The reason I'm rerunning is because I love kids and I want to be your school board member for another four years. I'm going to keep the momentum going through this next term, and we're going to get a lot more stuff done. A lot of folks on the board can't say they got results. I got results.
Okay, so the final two minutes. Let me ask you this. The last four years, we've had some questions about, the last four years, teacher turnover has increased. The last four years, class size has increased. The last four years, we have seen increased testing and climate in which teachers feel completely overburdened. I would agree, the poison starts from the top, and I would tell you with one hundred percent certainty that I believe it's time for new leadership at the top. I think it's time to have an educator's perspective on the board. I think it's time to change the tone in Stafford County Public Schools and work towards restoring that reputation that we once had. The eight point three million dollars that you've heard about, the people who are sitting on that board are fiscally responsible for that. It is their responsibility to make sure that that money that was allocated to teacher salaries actually went to teacher salaries. It is their responsibility to do that. We cannot continue to blame this on an old system of accounting, because quite frankly, if it was an old system, we ought to know how to use it. And if we didn't know how to use it because somebody left, then we are doing our job of cross-training and making sure that there's more than one person who can continue the institutional knowledge. So, bottom line, in the last four years, we have not seen things get better. We have seen them get progressively worse, so much so that I decided that this is how I was going to step out and I was going to fight for the students in a totally different way than I have. I've been advocating for students since I became an educator. I've done it at the local level, I've done it at the state level, and I have done it at the national level. And I will continue to fight for our kids. This is not a political agenda for me, I'm not interested in some program that I want to keep for my kids, I'm not looking for a hobby. I am looking to make sure that teachers and students have the absolute best learning conditions in Stafford County Public Schools, and that's why I'm doing this.
My kids are, they're young adults now. My youngest is a T L N of college, so why do I care about the schools? I said, "I did a little research, and I clearly understand that the good schools mean a healthy and good attitudes in a community." If you have good schools, you're going to get businesses coming down. Kids who are workforce-ready coming out of high school, they'll have jobs. Kids that go off to college, come back, they'll have opportunities in their community. That's what we need. We need that circle. The free lunches, that number has been going up. It's not, it doesn't have anything to do with the schools, and it might not always have to do with the poverty in your area, but it is a sign that we want to keep, work on the health of our community. So, that's what I want to do. I want to be committed to Stafford County and make sure we have good schools, because I truly believe good schools lead to that good community. We're getting lots of businesses coming up in the Quantico area, and we have the boots program, it gets those kids ready to, workforce-ready, and that's what we want. I said, "I am not, I don't have a, I'm not a type of special interest group, and like I said, my kids are at the T L N of school college, I'm not driving them around to activities." I said, "School board members need decision analysis skills, they need to know how to look at the long term, monitor what's going on." I said, "My entire work career requires a decision-making ability." I said, "You have to understand the problem, the needs and the concerns that can fulfill that, the needs, that, understand the needs and the concerns, and then make a wise decision as to what needs to be done." I said, "I feel like my skill set from working on the tunnel weapons control system can help the Stafford School Board to actually manage it as a system."
That's all our candidates to stand, and please give all our candidates.